Good evening. I'd like to call the Glencoe Silver Lake School Board Meeting of September 9th, 2019 to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alicia, will you please help with the roll call?
Jamie.
Present.
Kevin.
Here.
John, absent. Jason.
Here.
Myself, here, and Donna.
Here.
Thank you, Alicia. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next school board, regular school board meeting will be on Monday, October 7th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the GSL High School Community Room 443-444. Acknowledgements, are there any acknowledgements at this time?
You know, I just would like to, and we'll probably say this a couple of times, but tonight, but just want to say thank you to our staff and our students and our community for a wonderful start to the school year. It feels like we haven't stopped, you know, from last year. You just kind of pick up and go. But it truly has been a wonderful start of the school year, so I'd wanted to say thank you and acknowledge all the people that were involved with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other acknowledgements? Public input relating to the agenda, first call. Second call for public input relating to the agenda. And third call for public input relating to the agenda. Okay, hearing none. Reports and presentations, this evening we have Activities Director Dean Schwartz. Welcome.
Working. First of all, thank you for having me tonight. Things that I'd like to go over with you is, the first thing is the parking lot heard several compliments from opposing teams coming here, the change of the parking lot, and from parents coming in with grandparents and elderly people made it much smoother transition getting into the building. The comments on the handicap parking has gone over very well. Would like to let you know, you guys all received the picture of the updated sign out at Stevens Seminary. We've done that over. We've also done with the senior classes, then the lats over in the fence, made a nice addition on the home side of the bleachers. We currently have Jess Hess filling in for retired Mariel Gatenbee for the trainer at Ridgeview right now. She's doing a nice job until we can find a full-time person to take that spot. We currently, this year, are down five participants in the fall activities. We have 355 this fall in grade seven through 12. Last year we had 360. We currently are getting ready to host a Katie Delwich Invitational, which is out at our athletic complex. When we have that, it basically shuts down everything else and it becomes a really fun atmosphere for kids out there and to really push our cross-country program. You also receive the map that we have. That is a new map. That map will be put on the fence as you enter the facility out there to try to clear up some of the confusion between athletics and the community ed, so people know what field is where, and it'll be a big visual for them. We'll also have one in our office to help direct people and clear some of that up. And I'll be picking that up tomorrow and hopefully hanging that on the fence. And we are having a very, very difficult time right now finding soccer officials. We are working with that, trying to find different associations. Currently, there's a possibility that we don't have a game tomorrow. There are several teams in the conference with the same issue. It's been discussed at the A.D.s, and we're trying to work on different ways to be creative to allow those kids to have games. But right now, we have one official. I just got done with the signer about 10 minutes ago, and this is an ongoing thing and probably ongoing tonight for the rest of the night for me. So hopefully, we can find some way so we can have some games tonight, tomorrow night. And then I'd like to thank the Booster Club. They have done an outstanding job at the start of this year trying to get memberships. If anybody still wants to be a member, you can join that. You can come into our office and pick up the paperwork. You can also do it by talking to any Booster Club member or at football games or many activities that you come here, you can see them there. So if you have any questions, I'll take those now.
Dean, will this also be on the district website too as a link for people to access?
Yes, also the other conferences, they will be have that on their map, so when they have come to a game, they'll have all that information. Usually when we have an activity too, that send to them so their bus drivers know where to go, not always follow it, but they do know where to go.
Sounds good. One last question, with regard to the dismissals at the end of the day for sports and stuff, how have conversations with the rest of the district or the rest of the conference gone with regard to pushing back event start times and stuff? Has that been receptive by the other conference members or?
Yes, they've been very receptive of that. Not all cases can they honor what I request of them because they have multiple levels of games going on, but if they're able to, they do that. And we have started a little bit late when we get there, but that's common in activities though. We have other conferences that come here, get here late, and we just move back our start time.
Okay. Thank you for that effort and the communication, the work together with the rest of the teams and the the just the school districts that are within the conference and stuff, because I know that a decision made by any one district impacts the others in the conference and they can say yay or they can say nay. So I appreciate your willingness to talk to them, letting them know the actions that we took as a board and as a district, and trying to work with them to push those back so that it doesn't affect our dismissal of students early for activities and stuff, or at least as minimally as possible. So thank you for that work.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns or anything from the board members?
I'll just do a quick add or FYI to people. One of the things that we're going to try to do this Friday night is to make sure that our handicap, we kind of quote-unquote call it a handicap parking lot, which is just to the north of our tennis courts. One of the things that we want to just make sure that people are doing is that hand, that parking lot is for elderly or people that need to be, and the more that we can get the word out that have people utilize our new parking lot that can and walk the distance, and then have the people that, you know, have the purpose. And one of the things that people ask, well, why don't you just put the whole thing handicap? And label it all handicap. And the reason that we don't do that is that there are several times where people bring grandma and grandpa or whoever that that need assistance that don't have that sticker, if that makes sense, that still need it. And so it's kind of been this honor system, and I know we've been working on it, and I've heard just a few people that that have said, I'm coming to a game and this is where I need to park, and and it's full, and it's full even immense. So the the word needs to just get out or continue to to say, let's let's use our discretion on being able to use that parking lot for the people that need it. So thank you.
If I might add to that, we have hired someone this Friday night to watch that gate, actually. And then we're also encouraging people to drop them off right at the gate. We have ticket takers there, and then they can go and park, and if they're able to walk, we ask them to walk from the grass area or along the fence. And there has been plenty of parking for that.
So we're trying.
We are.
Any other questions by board members? Okay, thanks, Dean. Administrator and committee reports, Business Manager Sanders, would you like to begin?
Yep, just a couple of items, but I do want to just jump back up to the next school board meeting. Mr. Butler just pointed out the second Monday is October 14th. We've got a resolution later on in the agenda about the Columbus Day Resolution, so I'm not sure if you wanted, you know, if you're going to do that resolution, that would be the 14th to have that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but he announced, it's in here as the 7th, so I just wanted to clarify as you make that announcements that the next board meeting would be October 14th.
Okay. Good catch, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, just a couple of items. Update on the parking lot, as was mentioned, it's pretty much complete. They've kind of finished all the sod work around the edges and cleaned things up. We're still waiting for the lights that are going to go down the the center walkway. We haven't gotten an update on, from the electrician on when those will be put in yet. We're still waiting on that. And then up at Lakeside, the fence still has to be installed, and I think they still had some cleanup to do unless it got done today. It wasn't done on Friday when I was up there. So a few things to finish up on that yet, but it's coming along and is working very well. So we appreciate all the efforts that Dunick put in to help us resolve some of our cement issues. They were really after their subcontractor on that, so we appreciate their effort in taking care of that. The other item I wanted to mention under operations would be we were moving ahead with the order of a new van. We have one of our vans that will have to come off of our line, fleet line at the end of December. So working with the Facilities Committee, we're moving ahead with the ordering of a new 2024 Transit van that'll be similar to our last Transit van that we bought. So that will probably be delivered in January. So that will be coming, and then the other one will have to come off. We can still use it for staff, but it can't transport students anymore, and that is a big need that we have. So that's all I have. I'll wait with the levy information when we get to that on the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? When the new van comes online, will we be using it right away?
Yes.
And it comes on in January?
Yep.
Okay. And another different question, the lights out front of the high school, have those been repainted?
Yep.
Okay, so that's all.
The poles.
Yeah, the poles and stuff.
They painted them back in August when they did the ones on the west side of Lincoln by the columns, and then the front side of Lincoln by door 10? 12. Thanks, Amy. Those couple of poles there also got repainted, so they kind of all match now the the bronze color, and hopefully they stay bronze.
That's right. Thank you.
And the the work on the pool also is continuing. The painting has all been completed. Myquitas has been doing all the acid washing, and now they are replacing the the gaskets around all the lights. The steps have been repaired and replaced, so that's coming along. It'll still be shut down for a little bit yet while they finish the gasket repair, so.
Okay. Projects, 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 always completed, and then the next one's there already to be tackled. So thank you for all your work. Anything else, board members? Okay, thank you. Principal reports, Mr. Butler, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, thank you, Michelle, and good evening, everyone. Joy and I will will both participate in this report. You know, last month, we talked a little bit about culturally responsive teaching, and we did include an attachment, so you can read at at your convenience if you so choose on, you know, what does that mean for us in terms of practicality and how we're going to increase student achievement? But you have a couple of handouts titled Structured Productive Language Opportunities. You can see guidance from MDE, and then you see a document after that where Joy put put MDE's guidance into language that can be followed by those of us who who work with kids at it in a school setting. So at any point down the line, if you have questions for one or both of us, please do do call us at at the school offices. PLCs are starting up this week. We're going to be using culturally responsive teaching, reviewing our implementation, and using data to create our SMART goals within teams. And, you know, when I when I think of PLCs, I think of the time change and how that affords us opportunities to to do that and have quality time for teachers. An observation from from today, a couple of them, that it seems that many more kids are eating breakfast at Lincoln, perhaps because they they have enough time this year. We'll see when Tony provides numbers to us. And the the playtime in the morning, it's gone by fast. You know, perhaps some behaviors that that maybe we anticipated have not occurred, so that it's been a good experience for kids and for staff in the morning in the gym. You can see our theme under there, under PBIS and PRO, and we talked a little bit about that last month. And I'll take this time to acknowledge our our PRO team, which works at both elementary buildings, the amazing work they've done to create a theme and breathe life into it. If you, you know, if you came around, you'd see teachers wearing capes and superhero masks, and and they've just done a great job. I can't say enough about our PRO team at both buildings. Did some great work this summer to 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 set a good a good tone for the beginning of the school year. We'll get more into MCA during Joy's portion. Again, you see a summary down there about Title 1. Thanks to Donna Hammers for for helping to submit the grant today. We did receive a one-week extension from MDE. I think many districts were struggling, and our our regional rep did grant a one-week extension to to all districts in her region. Flip over to the to the back. We've got Minnesota Reading Corps tutors placed at both buildings. And I'll just go down to School Community Partnership and bring your attention to one additional flyer. Joy and Kelly Johnson, Lincoln Counselor, and Lisa Thompson, Lakeside Counselor, and I are going to attend the Poverty Simulation on Tuesday, September 17th. So there is, there's a flyer, and I'm looking forward to participating in that with our team and just, you know, learning about how we can better serve those families who are living in a situation where, you know, those of us in in this room really can't fully understand. So that's what I hope to to gain from this. What what questions do you have before I pass the mic? Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Good evening, everyone. I get to focus on the MCAs and what it has done with Lakeside students. You've been given several different documents. One of them is an Excel spreadsheet, and it has some green and some reds on it. I think it's always funny how when we look at data, we think of a holiday, possibly, or jelly beans or something like that. I think Matt passed them out to you. And then in your packet that Bill gave you with our information, then I want to direct you to the part where it says Structured Productive Language Opportunities. So last year, Lakeside was deemed a targeted school because of the North or through the North Star Report based on our MCA scores that we had done previously. And through that, it had been shown that our students in the EL category, the subcategory, hadn't been making enough gain to close the achievement gap. And I've given you information on that previously, but when we went through our MDE training with our leadership building or leadership teams for K through 6, then we identified a root cause, and then through that root cause, we come up with these evidence-based practices that we then implement and set SMART goals and then strategize how we're going to go about doing that. So we've come up with two different evidence-based practices that we implemented last year. And this is a three-year process, and it's pretty intense with MDE. We have a gal that works with us directly who's been pretty amazing to work with. So if you look at the one document, it says root cause at the top that, and then it talks about our evidence-based practice, which is Structured Productive Language Opportunities, and then it has the teacher will and then four statements. And then through that, we've implemented Wonders Literacy Curriculum K through 6. And then our second evidence-based practice is Culturally Relevant Pedagogy, and that's where we're reading that culturally responsive teaching in the brain and doing a book study, and then implementing the strategies that go along with it. And it's all, it's a pretty amazing book study that goes along with research by Zaretta Hammond, who does something called Ready for Rigor Implementation. So our staff is doing that throughout their PLCs this year, along with data, along with looking at our math and our literacy, really focusing on both of those. So what I want to highlight now is Minnesota Department of Education has done a wonderful job of putting together the Minnesota Report Card. I feel like everybody's spread out all of a sudden. So if you go on Minnesota Department of Education, then you can get to the Report Card site. It's very easy if you go into the Data Center, and then you go into the Report Card, and you can just dig into data as much as your heart desires. So when we look particularly at Lakeside Elementary, you can see this chart right here is looking at math academic progress. And what we want the most of up here is we want the dark blue and the green. This shows that achievement level improved for these students. This is Lakeside Elementary. This is GSL, and this is statewide. Shucks. Oops. Okay, so then you'll, if you scroll up here, you'll also see that Lakeside Elementary had an achievement level that maintained 55.8%. And then if you look at statewide, 49.4% of the students maintained or rose above. Okay, and then if you if we go to the reading academic, you'll notice that we maintained or went above again. We've improved, which is phenomenal. So now if we look over here at our North Star Academic Achievement, okay, we can see that Lakeside Elementary is at 60.8% for math and that the state is at 53.8%. So we did make an increase in math and literacy. And then you can see that Lakeside for that's not right, reading achievement statewide is at 58.3% and Lakeside is at 60.8%. And the most exciting part of this is that our EL students made, we we had, we went from, I think, 10% last year to 33% this year. So that's an increase. We have a very small cell of EL students, but yet it's impactful in what we have, and that meant about seven or eight students went from partial or does not meet to meets, which is pretty amazing. Do you have any questions about data? I love to talk about it, so if you want me to talk more, I can. All right, Matt?
I do not love data as much as Joy, so I'll make mine a little quicker. I'm going to give you both my report, and then I'm going to run through the junior high, senior high data here all at the same time. I'm not going to read the report that I gave each of you word for word. A lot of this is stuff that I've talked about most times that we get together. Some of the things like PBIS, we've talked about every month we've gotten together. This is the third year of our implementation. Also Panther Power Hour is something that I talk about quite extensively when we get together each month. The one thing I'd like to draw attention to that we are going to try new, starting tomorrow, is we are going to have our STEM lab supervised and available during A and B lunch for our students. Our STEM lab is probably our highest-powered computers we have in the school. Many of our students who are in some of our industrial tech courses, like video productions and and some graphic designing courses, those are the only computers that have those capabilities. In the past, students have asked to go in and work there, and Randy Wilson, who's our IT teacher, can only be in so many places at once, so he's in the shop working with the Woods kids, and he can't always be in that lab. So we have found some supervisors, and that will start tomorrow, so hopefully that will help some of our students with work completion and kind of enrichment activities that they may need to dig into. In our PLCs, we obviously have a new schedule this year, so at the junior high, senior high, we have PLCs every Tuesday and Thursday now. During this time, they work on a number of things. They have one grade level meeting a month, and they have one 712 vertical meeting a month. The rest of them are for them to work on curriculum. And what they're doing during that time is working on their response to intervention process. They're identifying the standards that need to be taught to our students in whichever curriculum that they're working with. And it's also a time for them to work cross-curricular. And the example I would give is if we had a science teacher who was talking about plate tectonics and how that would form a mountain range, they could work with our social studies department and do a lesson together, maybe even a unit together on that. So it just frees up time for these staff members to work together and at the end provide a better product for our students. With that change in time comes with the time adjustment like Bill had talked about. Again, what I see for the 712 students, especially our junior high students, are more more individuals eating breakfast. And I don't have hard numbers for you because Tony hasn't gotten them to us yet, but just this morning I walked through and and the tables were full, and students were sitting and eating, and that's great to see because I think if you're going to have academic achievement, you need to be not worried about the last time you ate. So it's a good, it's, it was great to see that. We also have teacher support for our students in the morning, more time for our kids to come in and visit with our teachers on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. That's opposite of our PLCs. And we also, at the junior high level, have ICU paraprofessionals to work, and they're available each day for our students. Another update is on our Lift Grant. I've talked to you about two Lift Grants that were written, one by Chris and Dane, which was a food trailer that she was given, I think, about $48,000 to pursue. Just Friday, she came to myself and found a trailer that she would like to purchase, and over the weekend worked with that individual and is now working with our district office to have a check to go pick that up. And I'm hoping that by Friday or Saturday, we have the trailer here, and it starts to get retrofitted, and she can begin planning curriculum to to start teaching out of the food truck and putting that to use, whether it be within the community or or at some of our sporting events. So very excited about that. As the months go by, you'll hear more and more about the food truck that Chris and Dane is working on. The other Lift Grant that was written was by Richard Smith, and that's a coding course that's being offered at the junior high level through code.org. That's been going since the first day of school. Kids are enjoying it. One of the things that I want to draw attention to with that is, and I'm not a huge tech guy here, but we have with that grant bought things called Kajit Mobile Hot Spots. And this is something that I talked to you as a board about a year ago of wanting to provide some of our students who may not have internet access at home, the ability to bring a hotspot home with them so they could access the internet. And with this grant, 10 of these hotspots were purchased. And we're not ready to roll that out right now for the 7th and 8th graders because we're figuring out some things like insurance and data packages. So Richard and Jeff are working together on that, but we do physically have them, and I think within the next couple of weeks, we're going to be ready to roll them out for students who are in need of conducting some work at home. On the bottom, talking about our school community partnerships. Again, we're continuing with our Olvea's Anti-Bullying Prevention Program. PBIS, as I had talked about, we still have two cultural liaisons, one at the junior high, one at the senior high level. We are beginning our high school and junior high connection maps this year, again, in hopes that 100% of our students in every grade have a meaningful connection with somebody on staff. And then lastly, board members, you should have each gotten a wristlet that I put for you this morning. These are going to be handed out Monday of Homecoming Week to all students and staff pre-K through 12. And I think it just goes along with one of the things that I truly believe in here is that we are a Panther family, whether we're at an elementary, pre-K, or high school setting. And it's something that's unique to us that we all have in common. And this wristband will also get every student 8th grade and above into any activity that week for free, and then also every student 7th grade and below into every activity that week for free if they have an adult with them. So just something that I was fortunate enough to work with Dean Schwartz on, and he believes in as well, and I wanted you as a board member to have one. Supposedly, they glow in the dark. Joy stuck her head in her purse earlier and said that they do, so that's good news. Along with Homecoming, we have our Meet the Candidates this Thursday. We have narrowed it down to our Five King and Five Queen Candidates, and then our Coronation will be on September 16th at 8:00 PM. That's what I have for the report to you, and I'll very quickly move into some of our testing data, which is on the red and green sheet, which was previously mentioned. Very quickly, I don't want to kill you with with data and numbers here. You can look at this and see for yourself, but the things that I do want to draw attention to you as a board, in the areas that we are not meeting state standard, what I'd like to draw attention to is the gap that was closed. For instance, if we look at 7th grade reading, in 2018, we were about 6% below the state average. And if you look at 2019, we were 1% below the state average. So although it still reflects that we're below, we've made a 5% increase in closing that gap. And I don't like the red and green dots because if you just look at the color, it doesn't show positives. There are three areas, and only three areas, where we regressed from 18 to 19. And this is where we will use the PLC time to kind of power the standards and talk as as a staff and as administration, why are we not reaching these students and what can we do differently? From these, we'll work on, again, our curriculum and our standards, and then what I would like to see and what I have been seeing about middle of the way through last year, end of last year, and now even beginning this school year, is every day that you walk into any classroom, learning targets and learning objectives posted for students. And a staff member will cover that right away at the beginning. At the end of this lesson, all students will know whatever the standard is. And they revisit it halfway through the lesson, remember this lesson is about, and they'll read the learning objective, and at the end of it, revisit it one more time with the students. Remember today's lesson was about this. We should all understand it. The last thing that I want to talk about a little bit when it comes to tests, and it's always hard, and this is something that I think every district struggles with, not just GSL, is is a rigor of a test. And oftentimes, when we look at scores, we're comparing apples to oranges because the student body that took a 7th grade math test last year is not the same student body that took a 7th grade math test this year. So those students have changed. What I like about this data that's in front of you is you can kind of track kind of track students. So, if you look at your 2018 seventh grade reading scores, again, they were 5.9% below state average. And if you follow them down to 2019 eighth graders, they were 3% below the state average. So, if you follow them that way vertically, they are making progress again. And those are the things that I'd like to point out with testing. If you have more questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you, or Dan Saboda would be available as well. Any questions for me tonight? Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Superintendent Report?
Hopefully, I will be able to get through this without my child walking out because he's wandering aimlessly out in the hallway at this point, trying to figure out if he's going to get a ride home or not. But with that said, no, I just want to say thanks to all of our staff and our students. And obviously, when you look at some of the data, what we're doing is working. And hopefully, the continuous improvement cycle that we are on is going to continue to go down that path. And given teachers the time that they need, hopefully, will be another advantage to things. And as we go through our cabinet meeting today, we had a long, healthy discussion on the different things. And we have our steps in place. The teachers are doing a great job. And I know that there will be continuous improvement. So, thank you for everyone with that. Just a couple of other things that I have. As you know, we're starting, Trish, I forgot to bring down the dates for the referendum. Do we check with all those? When is our first one coming up here in a couple of weeks? Remember?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. So, we're going to start getting out to all of the different communities and having our meetings. We'll get that to you, John, about to help us out, publish all that stuff so that we can have our meetings and have the information out to the public because obviously, November 5th is going to be coming up pretty quick. I have started to do some things. I've gone to a couple of different groups. I got a chance to speak at the 70th Glencoe Class Reunion here on Friday, our Thursday afternoon. It was wonderful to hear the stories and to understand some of the foundation that has been laid here in Glencoe at that time, but obviously, for all of us in the whole entire district. So, we'll continue on with that. And as I said before, November 5th, we'll be here very soon. One thank you that I wanted to mention that we didn't do was Tangletown. Tangletown was the one that came out and helped us with the landscaping out there and put that in and really tied up a lot of the, you know, the, you know, just the scenic look of that. And it also is very practical with our water. So, a special thank you to them. Negotiations, we do have some finishing stuff to do tonight. And I know Jason will report on that with the teachers' union. For the 284, we have another meeting at, what's the time? Seven o'clock?
Five.
Five o'clock on the 18th of September for our next meeting with 284. And I know we'll talk a little bit about that here tonight. And then, other than that, you know, I continue on with some of my work with McLeod for Tomorrow, McLeod, Towards Zero Death, and then also the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. Those things are happening as we go through. We have a Student Leadership Day that's coming up on the last day of September, which is the work through McLeod for Tomorrow. And then finally, we do have our wellness activities that have all started up. And that was something that was very popular with our staff. They have an opportunity to get some dollars back in their HSA or off of their premiums. But we did have a really good participation last year with our staff, with our wellness policy, our wellness committee. And that's continuing because we actually had activities that happened here tonight. So, like I said, the rest of the agenda stuff is on the agenda. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Just a follow-up to the operating referendum meetings that are coming up, just to give you the first three, and there are a number of them throughout the communities of GSL. The first one that'll be coming up is Thursday, September 19th, and that is here at the GSL High School Community Room 443444 at 7:30 PM. The second one is Monday, September 23rd, and that one is at 7:00 PM at the New Auburn Community Center. And the third one is Wednesday, October 2nd. That is at Neeson's Bar and Grill in Biskie, and that is at 6:00 PM. And like I said, there's more than that, but those are the first three that are coming up within the cycle and series of meetings that will be taking place for information. And thank you to The Chronicle for publishing them before. And once again, encouragement to continue to print them in upcoming editions. Committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Okay. Hearing none. Approve the Agenda. Action item. Please notice it is with an addendum. So, let's see here. With that addendum, we did a couple of relaterings and stuff. We've got the H on the previous Agenda was Resolution to Accept Donations. That will remain H. Then we've got on the addendum, IJK. We'll make L miscellaneous. Then we'll make M, the Closed Session Meeting to Discuss Negotiation Strategies. The N will be the reopen meeting, and the O will be adjournment. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Agenda with the addendum as mentioned.
I'll make motion, please.
Is there a second?
No second.
I have a motion by Jason and a second by Kevin to approve the Agenda with the addendum as noted. Questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Approve the Consent Agenda. Action item. Enclosure number one. Please note that there is an addendum to the consent agenda as well. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So.
I've got a motion by Kevin. Is there a second? And I have a second by Alicia to approve the consent agenda. Questions? Discussion?
Lots of hearings.
Yep. Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Old business? There's no old business at this time. New business. Item A, Annual Designation of Identified Official with Authority. Action item. It is necessary for the school board to designate the school district's identified official with authority annually. Not only, this individual is allowed to authorize access by local education agency users to Minnesota Department of Education's secure websites. Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sander will be certified as the identified official with authority for Glencoe Silver Lake Public Schools. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Jason to designate Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sander as the school district's identified official with authority for the 2019-2020 school year. Questions? Discussion?
Is it, is it common to do two? I know in the past, we've only done the one, but is it common to do two?
Yes. If you remember, a few months ago, we actually went through the process to nominate Michelle so that when I'm gone, she can do that. So, and now this is just what we've done every year at this time. And we're putting both of our names on there just because that's what the recommendation was to do as we move forward.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, Preliminary Levy Certification. Action item. School districts are required to certify proposed levies for the school district operations for the 2020-2021 school year by September 30th. The proposed levy allows the various county auditors to prepare tax statements for the school district property owners. Business Manager Sander will provide information about the preliminary levy certification. The administration recommends that the board certify the maximum levies permitted. The school board may lower the levies in December when they are required to certify the final levies. However, the school board cannot increase the amount of any levy beyond the amount identified in the preliminary levy authorization. I'll take a motion and a second just to put it on the table, and then we'll have Michelle share the information. Is there a motion?
I see.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Michelle, would you like to provide the information?
Yep.
Thank you.
Just as a refresher on how the levy process works, and for anybody that doesn't remember, or for Alicia being new, if John was here also, I'll kind of explain, walk you through how this levy process works. So, the last two months, we go through and we submit data to MDE. So, during July and August, we're updating all our data, all our information that we want to seek levy authority for through the process, summer levy process. The MDE, the Minnesota Department of Education, then has to put together all that data, and then they issue the levy sheets to us, the levy documentation. So, this is what we call the 2019 payable 2020 tax levy process, which means in December, the school board's going to approve the levy, meaning 2019, it's approved in 2019. It's for taxes payable in the year 2020, but it's revenue for the school district for the following year for 2021 is when the revenue is used for. So, you can see how far out that we're doing this levy process, trying to get all the information as correct as we can. So, once this is all submitted to MDE, the boards have to approve the preliminary levy. And what we do, and what they recommend, like Jamie read, is you approve the maximum levy authority that you could possibly get. So, the next three weeks, we spend going through all 40 pages of the new levy documents, verifying that that information is correct. And you have up until September 30th to make any of those changes. If you would designate a certain dollar amount at this point, you would not be able to go back and make those changes. That's why they say just approve the maximum till they get everything worked out to make sure there's no big errors. So, you don't lose out on any levy authority that you have. My workshop to go through the levy sheets is on Wednesday, so I'll be working on it the next couple of weeks, but in detail on Wednesday to go through each of these pages. It's always just a fun workshop. If anybody wants to join me, I welcome the company on it. So, at this point, you know, our data, the little bit that I've looked at it is looking fairly accurate at this point. One thing I wanted to mention a little bit, and Chris and I have had just brief chance to talk about this, something new that they're giving us for some levy authority is called some building lease levy. And this is coming through the Southwest West Central Secure, or Service Cooperative. And it has to do with regarding the service cooperative leasing all their buildings for their Level 4 programs for special ed. Up to this point, they've built the cost of all those leases into our, the cost that is charged back to school districts for paying for those students to attend there. Working through MDE and the staff at the service cooperative, they've now said that school districts could individually choose to levy that authority as part of a levy, a lease levy, to recoup some of those dollars. For us, the additional levy authority that we could, if we decide to move forward with it, is about $17,645. So, that is additional authority that we, if we decide to do that, we could get some dollars back to help with some of those special ed costs that we have at the Cosmos Learning Center. So, that's something we want to research a little more. They had some meetings last week. I know Chris is still getting information on that, so it's relatively new. And we just want to explore that a little farther before we have a strong recommendation to you as a board, whether we want to pursue that or not. It does increase, for us, our levy probably a little less than half a percent. So, not a lot of dollars, but it's a way for us to get some dollars back. But I think we want to take a look at our full levy, once we know what the maximum levy authority is going to be and see how it affects taxpayers. Right now, the abatement bond, as you know, is part of the new levy process. But even with that on there, right now, we have an adjustment in our debt service of about $55,000. If you remember, in debt service, you are required by law to levy 105% to make sure that you have enough dollars coming in to cover your debt payments. And that extra 5% allows for anybody that doesn't pay their taxes, they're in some kind of tax dispute with the county. So, this is a way to make sure you're getting enough money. Once that fund balance gets so large, then they start to reduce your levy. The credit goes back to the taxpayers. And then they kind of watch it. They, MDE monitors that. And when it gets too large, they reduce your levy because you don't need that to keep growing, because you just need enough in there to make sure you're paying your debt. So, I'll be reviewing those numbers closely and also have elders take a look at them as well to make sure they're right. So, at this time, I would recommend approving the maximum. And then at the October board meeting, I'll have a pretty close to exact percent of what that looks like. And then, keep in mind, none of these numbers will reflect our election in November. That would be, you know, additional, if that referendum passes, that would change the taxes. But that would be in effect then when you approve the final levy in December. Questions that you have on the levy process?
Michelle, do you remember, when is the ECFE SE addition coming off of?
2023.
2023. Okay. Thank you. And how many years was that? I mean, that went fast.
That was a 10-year lease levy.
A 10-year? Okay. That went fast.
Yep. So, that, yeah, we got just the four years left on that.
Yep.
And that'll be a big savings for taxpayers. The other thing that Chris and I'll have the information on as we do all our referendum presentations, is the new credits that are going to be applied towards debt for ag land. Now, we know referendum, the ag land isn't part of that, but it's something we want property owners to keep in mind, that by 2023, the ag land credit is going to be 70%. So, they're going to continue to see a big credit back on their taxes for any ag land. Again, their ag land isn't taxed for the referendum, but all the building bond debt and the abatement bond debt is all, ag land is taxed for that. So, by 2023, that'll be a 70% credit back to those property owners. So, that's a, you know, a great break on their taxes for that.
Any other questions for Michelle? Hearing none. I have a motion by Donna and a second by Alicia to certify the maximum amount permitted by law for the preliminary levy for the 2020-2021 school year. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, Columbus Day Resolution. Action item. It is a recommendation of Superintendent Sanju to adopt a resolution to allow the school board to conduct business on Columbus Day, which is the second Monday in October. Resolution allowing the Glencoe Silver Lake School District to conduct business on Columbus Day, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 2859, Glencoe Silver Lake, as follows. That public business may be conducted on Columbus Day, the second Monday in October, in accordance with Minnesota Statute 645.44 subdivision 5. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Alicia and a second by Jason to adopt the Columbus Day Resolution. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote. Alicia, if you could help with that, please?
Jamie?
Four.
Kevin?
Four.
Jason?
Four.
Myself, four. Donna.
Thank you, Alicia. Motion carries. Item D, Resolution Appointing Election Judges. Action item enclosure number two. The individual specified on Exhibit A enclosure two, attached here too, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as judges of election for the school district's special election on November 5th, 2019, to act as such at the combined polling place listed on said exhibit. The election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots cast, and submit the results to the school board for canvas in the manner provided for other school district elections. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second? I'll make that second. I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Jamie to adopt the following resolution. Are there any questions or comments?
Just to follow up, this is part of the whole election process that the school board does have to approve the judges that are listed. And we have a couple extra just in case of an illness or, you know, somebody can't come. And to follow up with that, our required mailing, we're just about ready to get that sent to the printer, and that will go in the mail. The dates are, it has to be in the mail between October 6th and October 21st. So, we'll be getting that out to all the property owners as well. So, we're working on getting all the property owners. So, we're working on getting all the property owner information from the counties, all, all four counties that we work with. So, kind of all these steps and deadlines to meet to go along with the election process.
Okay. Thank you. With that being said, a roll call vote will be taken. Alicia, if you could assist with that, please?
Jamie?
Four.
Kevin? Jason?
Four.
Myself, four. And Donna.
Thank you, Alicia. Just to back up one moment to the item C, the Columbus Day Resolution that we took, just one more clarification. The next school board meeting, because of the action taken in item C, the Columbus Day Resolution, the next school board meeting will be then on Monday, October 14th, the second Monday of the month, at 7:00 PM in the Glencoe Silver Lake High School Community Room 443444, just as a clarification, since we took that action on agenda item C. Thank you. Item E, Ridgewater College PSEO Administrative Contract. Action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO contract with Ridgewater College for the 2019-2020 academic year. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Donna to approve the post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO contract with Ridgewater College for the 2019-2020 academic year. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. Item F, Minnesota State University Mankato Pass PSEO Administrative Contract. Action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO contract with Minnesota State University Mankato for the 2019-2020 academic year. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All right, I have a motion by Jason and a second by Donna to approve the post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO contract with Minnesota State University Mankato for 2019-2020 academic school year. Questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. Item G, Southwest State Marshall PSEO Administrative Contract. Action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO contract with Southwest State Marshall College for the 2019-2020 academic year. Is there a motion? And is there a second? I have a motion by Alicia and a second by Jason to approve the post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO contract with Southwest State Marshall College for the 2019-2020 academic year. Questions or discussion or comments?
I'd just add that, because we haven't been the first two, these are standard agreements that we do each year.
True.
Yes. Yeah, I figured that, so I thought I would just mention it.
Any other comments, discussion, questions? I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. Item H, resolution to accept donations. Action item. It is a recommendation of Superintendent Sanju to accept the donations as listed below. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I have a motion by Alicia and a second by Kevin to accept the donations as listed below. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. Thank you once again to the organization listed there for their donation to the school district. It is greatly appreciated. Now, we transfer over to the addendum to the board agenda for item I. Item I, approve Education Minnesota GSL Master Teacher Contract for 2019 through 2021. Action item. Board negotiators Lemke and Lindeman have negotiated an agreement with Education Minnesota GSL for a new two-year contract and recommend its approval. The agreement is from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Superintendent Sanju also recommends approval of the new contract. Is there a motion? Just to put it on the table, is there a motion? And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and I have a second, so it's on the table. Jason, did you want to comment? Okay, thank you.
I'll just talk a little bit on the settlement. It was a two-year, two-year contract as normal. Total package percent rise of 5.72% increase over two years. Year one, $225,419. And year two would be $306,876. That includes steps and lanes, 2% in salary in the first year and 2% in the second year on the salary scale. 4.33% in extracurricular on the first year only. A few language items that some things were cleaned up and some additions and some subtractions. Increase incentives for staff that are not absent during the school year and the try. We removed the fair share language, added the position of cultural liaison, chess club advisor, and Panther pals advisor, and just some general grammar and dates and language changes to accurately reflect the current contract. Any questions?
All right, hearing none. There's a motion by Jason and a second by Kevin to approve the two-year agreement with Education Minnesota GSL from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. And the motion passes. Thank you to negotiators Lemke and Lindeman for their work and thank you for the negotiators on Education Minnesota GSL as well for the work done on their side of the negotiations. Item J, community education contracts. Action item. Two-year agreements have been negotiated with the community education employees, Jane Gettle and Renee Jensen. The agreements are from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Board negotiators Al Sabin and Keister and Superintendent Sanju recommend approval of the new contracts. Is there a motion? And is there a second? All right. I have a motion and I have a second. The contracts for Renee Jensen, we have a first year increase of 2.78% and a second year percent increase of 2.18% for a total package of 4.6, excuse me, 4.96%. The dollars associated would be in that 2019-2020 year, $51,303.69. In the second year, the 2020-2021 year, it would be $52,419.89. For Jane Gettle, the first year of the contract would be a 2.76% increase. The second year is a 2.21% increase. The dollars associated, the first year, would be $56,815.06. The second year, which is the 2020-2021 school year, would be $58,069.28. And then, as far as language goes, a floating holiday was added to each of those individual contracts. Any questions? Thank you. That is true. Salary and benefits for each of those were the percents as well as the dollars listed. Thank you for that, Michelle. Questions, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Alicia to approve the two-year contracts with the community education employees, Jane Gettle and Renee Jensen, from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2019. That would be from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you to those individuals for negotiating the contract. Thank you, Mr. Sanju, for your assistance as well in both teacher contract negotiations as well as the contracts of the two individuals for community ed as well. Thank you.
Don't forget Michelle.
Thank you. And Michelle Sander as well. Absolutely. The, the numbers, the number cruncher. Thank you. Thank you for that, Jason. Item K, approval of hiring special education paraprofessional. Action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional. The position is needed for K2 autism program. We'll get a motion in a second to put it on the table and then if there's additional information, we'll take it at that time. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there some additional information that you want to provide?
Well, basically, and Bill, if you'd like to chime in here as well, you know, we had our cabinet, you know, we had our cabinet meeting here today and it just was brought to our attention that, you know, the needs of the kids that have increased today, just they're, they're, they're not being met with the personnel because of being stretched so thin. And so, in terms of, of Bill looking, working with his staff and trying to run it as efficiently as possible, the, you know, the need of, of an additional paraprofessional in that classroom to allow, I suppose Bill's the word, breathing room for them to have the, the necessary breaks, the necessary coverage, you know, those types of things in the classroom. They arrived at this as being the most efficient manner of being able to get that because right now, that's not happening, from what I understand. And so, as we discuss this and, and, you know, prodded them to say, is there any other way? Is there any other opportunity? Is there, you know, a way to, you know, to do some scheduling, those types of things? In the end, because of the needs of special education kids, they need some more support. And so, I recommend that we, we add this paraprofessional in this classroom.
Yeah, that, that does explain it well. Chris, thank you. Typically, you know, we're asking for a paraprofessional to work with a student, two students, three students. This will be working in the, in the program. It's the Star Autism Program Strategies for Teaching, excuse me, based on autism research. Right now, we're, we're not meeting those kids' needs because it is so intense with the academic and social rotations they're doing to free up the staff who are in there so that Paris can get breaks, Mary can get her prep. So, it's going to be a classroom generalist focusing on special education and meeting those kids' needs.
Can you review, just as usual, what is the percent paid by the federal funding for this position?
Let me try, Michelle. 67? 64?
Okay. And, and I guess my point being it is not 100% funded, is it?
No.
No. And, and, and it isn't a trick question, but it is something, it is something that, once again, with, with fulfilling IEPs and the needs of our students, this is once again an, an opportunity, a need that is out there to fill. But it is once again, one of those things where there's mandates and there's the needs and, and the funding is not fully funded by those that are sometimes doing the mandating, in this case, like the feds. And so, that's why I kind of asked once again, just sort of that review of roughly what is the percent that is picked up by those that do the mandating? And then, of course, the rest of that, which is 30-some percent or whatever, is the district's responsibility, once again, to pick up. So, that's why I kind of made the question or the mention of it because we just always need to be reminded of those mandates, those needs, and once again, how we as a district attempt to fulfill them, but with the dollars and cents that we have.
And if you hear the word cross subsidy, this is, that gap that you just talked about is exactly what it is. And, and, you know, the cross subsidy gap continues to grow in school districts and presents challenges. We're, we're not any different. But when you hear those words, this is the summary that you just gave about that word, so.
And, and, you know, that's the discussion too, that, you know, I and others have with individuals at the state and at the federal government that represent us, the people. And the story of GSL, like Chris said, is no different than the stories of other districts too. They've, they've got the same types of students that have needs and trying to fulfill those needs and meeting those needs with the dollars and cents that they have and that they're given too. And it's, we're stretched very thin as districts. So, not unique to GSL, absolutely. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Then I have a motion by Donna and a second by Kevin to approve the hiring of a special education paraprofessional. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. Item L is miscellaneous. We do not have any miscellaneous at this time. Okay.
I just wanted to, on behalf of Director Lemke and myself, I want to thank Education Minnesota for a professional, upstanding meetings that we had. And we didn't always agree, but I think we always agreed we were trying to do what's best for the students of GSL and come to an amicable agreement and, and we did. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Jason. Are there any other miscellaneous items? Okay. Thank you. Hearing none, we'll go to item M, closed session meeting to discuss negotiation strategy. An action item. Is there a motion to close the board meeting for negotiation strategy session? Is there a second? I'll make that second. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Jamie to close the meeting at 8:10 PM in order to discuss negotiation strategies. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. We'll close the meeting at this time.